All right, I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Legion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our first item on the agenda is Michelle Collier will give us an update on Good Neighbor House.
Good afternoon. How is everyone? It's so glad to be here. Thank you for inviting us. So I'm here to give an update on what Good Neighbor House is doing and where we've come as far as our construction and what we're doing for the community. So I'm Michelle Collier. I'm the Executive Director of Good Neighbor House. And we, what is Good Neighbor House? We are a faith-based organization. We deal with health and human services. And the number one thing that we do is we provide food and human health, healthcare services to the Miami Valley. We provide, let me see. This is not working now. I did test this out before I came up here. It was working. I'm just glad it didn't work for you. It looked like it must have been. So I'll go ahead and keep talking. And so we provide food support to our neighbors. We are a 15-day pantry. Since COVID, we have moved from a 30-day to a 15-day. We supply a three-to-five-day food supply to our neighbors. They can come back every 15 days. We, thank you. We do encourage them that they go to other food pantries to help feed their families if our food does not sustain them. So we already have served over 27,000 individuals. The need is growing. So right now, we have seen a 10% increase in individuals, but that need is only growing. And we have, we increased our hours, but then we had to back down because of how many people we were serving and we couldn't keep up with the food flow. So we're working on getting more hours and making sure that we have more food. We're collaborating with the Food Bank and using their purchasing power to help us get more food in. So we are experiencing the increase, and the increase is expected to continue to grow. So another area that we have provided is in our one-stop shop is healthcare. So we provide ourselves in serving, we pride ourselves in serving the underserved and underinsured. We focus on the working poor. So those without insurance or those with minimal insurance. On the medical side, we do no insurance at all. That includes medical, includes eye, physical therapy, the pharmacy, anything to do with medical is separated from dental. So on our dental side, we deal with Ohio Medicaid and the Managed Care Plans. Those Managed Care Plans, there's one dentist for every 1,500 recipients in Dayton. And so to get access to good dental care is really a bother to, it's just hard. These people's teeth are needing, they're needing, they're needing someplace to go, someplace that's going to understand their situation in the poverty, and they can't afford dental care. So they are coming to us, and we are getting them through the process of getting them insurance, and then we accept that insurance. We also do self-pay, and we do a sliding fee scale depending on where they fall within that poverty level. We give zero, or we give up to 100% off on our dental services. Dental services can be expensive, but Good Neighbor House really prides ourselves in the low amount in which we charge for certain services. And again, we, we do get $100,000 from the county through the Human Services Levy, and that does help with our giving free services to those that absolutely need it. And so we have decided to do a capital campaign. We kept seeing a growth in the appointments that needed made in the medical side and on the dental side. So we decided that we were going to do a 2,600-square-foot expansion. That was started and now is completed since April. We did groundbreaking and now a ribbon-cutting, which the Commissioners were there. Thank you so very much for attending. We have seen a 150% increase, and I'm not good at slidings. I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Okay.
I told you I wasn't good at this.
So we do have, we went from two exam rooms that was in the dental clinic, and now we are going from two to six. We actually have a wellness room, and we do physical therapy, and also we do classes, such as, we do a special dietary needs program that helps people that have a specific nutrition program to help with their chronic illnesses. So they will meet with a licensed dietitian. They will get a $70 gift card to buy those more nutritious foods that not all food pantries have in their pantries. And then they also have to take three classes. One that deals with their chronic issues, one that teaches them about nutrition, and another one that deals with either exercise, cooking classes, some kind of educational component that will help them through their life in, with their chronic issue. We have seen an increase in diabetes and hypertension within our neighbors. We are helping them maintain their levels of, their glucose levels, where we want to get them off their medications if possible, and of course, their hypertension and how to cope. And we are also now adding obesity to that. So we're trying to help our neighbors be more healthy and how to get more access to food on a, on a more nutritious level. So since COVID, we have seen the demand in dental as well. So COVID had a big impact on the dental field. And just because of the aerosols and all of the issues with COVID and airborne, the backlog for dental services is atrocious. So we have seen a great demand. So with our expansion with medical, we were able to move our medical team out and build more dental bays. So we're going from four to six dental bays. We have seen a 40% increase already in our dental appointments. So we're able to see more people come in our doors and get them help, get them out of pain, and get them into a more preventative care maintenance for each individual. So we continue, we continue to see the growth. We are hoping that, we added a full-time dental dentist. We haven't had that in quite some time, so that has helped immensely. We're hoping to add another dentist to make sure that we have just, just constant turnover as far as patients in and out of these chairs to get them the care that they need. The one thing that we are looking at is hiring a hygienist, which is all about preventative care, and that is very important to the overall health of an individual. So we have also added a pharmaceutical dispensary. The Dayton Public Health came to us and asked us, not public health, I'm so sorry. The Reach Out Clinic has closed, and they, Montgomery County Public Health? It is public health. Came to us, I'm so sorry. Came to us and asked us if we could help in any way. So we decided that we would give it a try. We went through other clinics to see what they do. And we now are giving out, I think it's over $86,000 a month in medications. And these are people that only have no insurance. So we don't do anything that's controlled substance, but we do do anything that deals with their chronic issues. We have, you know, glucometers, we have insulin, we have, and we deal with other companies that help us get these at no cost or at a minimal fee, that we can allow them to get that for free at our place. So it is definitely, we quadrupled the space for, we were in a closet because we had no space, but since we did the upgrade to the building, we were able to quadruple the space, and now we're doubling the medications that are actually going out the door. And we think that that will continue to grow just because of the need of our patients is growing. So that is my conclusion for Good Neighbor House. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I don't have, I don't have questions. I know we were there for the opening, and it's truly beautiful.
Yeah, thank you.
And the numbers only emphasize it was a wise decision to expand because the need, you probably, I mean honestly, it sounds like you may, even with the expansion, at some point in the future run out of space again. But it's obvious that all of these decisions and these investments that are being made by a whole lot of people, but you know, through your leadership, are impacting the lives of our citizens, and those who are the most vulnerable in healthy ways. So I know, we would all feel, probably all women in this room, feel grateful that that is occurring and nothing to be taken for granted. And I'm sure with inflation and everything else going on, that, you know, it just becomes that more challenging for you as well.
Yes. And we only have 14 employees. Only four of them are full-time. The rest are part-time, and then the majority of what we have is volunteers. So without the volunteers of our neighbors, there's no way this could work. So thank you to Montgomery County.
Well, I want to say thank you for fulfilling need. Obviously, we wish it could be a lot more. I mean, you reference Reach Out, and there definitely is a gap, we know that. And you know, you think about, people should be able to have insurance now. Well, we know that there are still many out there that don't. We have unmet needs, and we have, you know, the hospitals still have indigent care, you know, that's happening. So thank you. And it was great to see your expansion and the rooms and how nice it is, you know, that people can come to a nice facility and get help that they need. You and your board. Jim Vanagrove, hello. One of our wonderful county employees who I know dedicates a lot of time to Good Neighbor House.
Yes.
In fact.
For years.
For years. In fact, that's how I first found out about Good Neighbor House, was because of Jim. And so we've watched you grow. And sad that you have to grow.
It is very sad.
Sad that you have to grow, but.
We want to put ourselves out of business. That's the plan.
Right, but thank you. And you know, the dental and the eye care is so incredible, what you guys do on a very limited budget. And of course, we thank all of our friends from Kettering Health Network who are always there supporting you. Frank, he's your board chair, right? He's one of our favorites. You know, just keep up the good work, and we're glad you can play a small role.
Thank you.
But yeah, let us know when things are going on that we should know about with you guys, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, I was just going to say that I think it's great that someone had come in there, and so many of the needs are met in just one place as opposed to, oh, no, you have to take a bus over here to do this or that. My question is, I know where you are. You're just a little bit right around downtown. Have you ever looked at your boundaries as far as, do you get people like just in that region? Or do you get them all over?
We've done a hot map, and it's all over. I mean, we, especially on the dental side, because there's not a lot of dentists that take Medicaid. So we're getting people, I mean, from, as far as Salina. I mean, I think we had last weekend, or last week was Toledo. Someone came from Toledo for tongue tie, and they just couldn't get any help. And they don't take Medicaid up there for tongue tie. And we have a specialist that comes in just to do tongue and lip ties. And it's just a growing need, and there's just no one that takes Medicaid. So it's very sad.
Yes, well, thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
For the update.
All right. Our next item of business is our County Engineer, Paul Greiner.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrators, ladies and gentlemen. We have three items today. The first is Resolution 22-1241 to authorize an LPA federal-local wet project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Huffman Road Bridge Project. 1242 is to amend the agreement with Brumbauer Construction, Inc., for the Philadelphia Drive Bridge Rehabilitation Project in Butler Township by adding $104,267.98 to the original amount for a revised total of $2,699,691.98. And 1243 is to submit applications to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, State Capital Improvement Program, or the Local Transportation Improvement Program. For project applications to be submitted for round 2022 through 2023 fiscal year 2024.
It's okay. Move to approve. Sorry, my computer's acting up. There must be something in the stuff today.
Yeah, right.
Whatever.
I seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1244 authorizing an agreement with the Dayton Children's Hospital for the use of Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Office Regional Training Center firing range.
I'm going to move approval, but that's kind of interesting.
It's wordy. It's the, it's the, it's the training range, Al.
Okay, all right, yeah, okay. I get you. Okay, for their security officers. I was just picturing all these doctors and nurses going.
No, they have.
Like, have we gone too far or what?
They have their own, they have their own police department.
Yeah. Okay, I second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Juvenile Court?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of Anthony Capizzi, Administrative Judge, we have several resolutions today. 22-1245, Lighthouse Youth Services Incorporated, to provide sex offender treatment services for adjudicated and/or diverted youth in an amount not to exceed $241,000. 1246, also Lighthouse Youth Services Incorporated, to provide substance abuse, trauma, and mental health services for adjudicated and/or diverted youth in an amount not to exceed $40,000. 1247, Lighthouse Youth Services Incorporated, to provide inpatient sex offender treatment services in an amount not to exceed $193,500. 1248, Daybreak, to provide emergency foster care services at a per day rate up to $100 per day in an amount not to exceed $40,000. 1249, Sunmont Village Incorporated, to provide mentorship, life skills, and education and career exploration services for youth in the partners in Reducing Youth Recidivism Expansion Program in an amount not to exceed $230,000. 1250, Wright State University for Quality Assurance Services for the Courts, Ohio Department of Youth Services reclaim funded programs in an amount not to exceed $28,350. And finally, 1251, City of Dayton, to provide mediation services for youth in an amount not to exceed $85,000.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Administrator, in the Clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on August 2nd, 2022. Resolution 1252, Approval of Bills, and Resolution 1253, Approval of Traveling Expenses. Both those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Under Administrative Services, we have several resolutions for consideration, beginning with Resolution 1254. This is the Approval of Personnel Actions. This list is available in the Clerk's office. 1255, Authorize an Agreement with Sheldon Meyer Associates Incorporated for Limited Structural Engineering Services for the Facilities Management Department in an Amount Not to Exceed $5,900 Through December 29th of 2023. 1256, Authorizes a Price Agreement with Veolia ES Technical Solutions LLC for the Household Hazardous Waste Program for the Environmental Services Department, Solid Waste Group, through August 31st, 2025, with options to extend. 1257, Authorizes a Purchase Agreement with Leeds Precision Instruments Incorporated to provide accessories for the existing LCFS Firearms and Toolmarks Comparison Microscope for the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab in an Amount Not to Exceed $2,810. 1258, Authorizes a Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Dayton as required by the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for the Submission of a Fiscal Year 2022 Justice Assistance Grant Application in the Amount of $174,685. 1259, Amends the Agreement with Bennett &amp; Williams Environmental Consultants Incorporated for the Butler Township Water Quality Project by increasing the original amount by $10,125 for a revised total of $396,425 through August 1st of 2023. Resolution 1260, Authorizes the Purchase from Farber Specialty Vehicles Incorporated of a Mobile Classroom for Community Outreach for the Department of Job and Family Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $422,365. The next two resolutions authorize grant agreements with the Ohio Emergency Management Agency for Funds Made Available under the United States Department of Homeland Security through March 31st of 2024. 1261 is for the Fiscal Year 2021 State Homeland Security Grant Program in the Amount of $369,345. And 1262 is for the Fiscal Year 2021 State Homeland Security Program Law Enforcement Grant in the Amount of $158,364. The next two resolutions extend agreements. The first is 1263 with Superior Dental Care Incorporated for Dental Benefits to Enrolled Employees and Their Dependents through December 31st of 2023. And 1264 is with IMED for vision, provision care benefits for enrolled employees and their dependents through December 31st of 2026. The following resolutions, and there are two of them, request proposals. The first is 1265 for Violent Intruder Response Training for the Risk, Safety, and Emergency Management Department, and 1266, an Employee Assistance Program Provider for the Human Resources Department.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Environmental Services?
Thank you, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for your consideration. Resolution 1267, Approve Plan Specifications, Estimated Cost of $1,169,900 and Solicit Bids for the Construction of Water Reclamation Facilities for the Concrete Tank Rehabilitation Eastern Regional Phase III Project. 1268, Accept the Official Check for the Grand Villas of Clayton Development in the Amount of $20,638.40. 1269, Accept Sanitary Sewer Lines for Maple Crest Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. And then we have three resolutions for authorized cooperative agreements with Harrison Township for the Distribution of Funding for Ohio Public Works Grants and Loans. And that's 1270, Cedar Lawn Water Main Replacement Project. 1271, Falmoth and Els Marada, Beralda Water Main Replacement Project. 1272, Green Hill and Hornwood Water Main Replacement Project. And we have three resolutions to accept easement deeds for sewer lines and approve agreements for payment of $1 to the Board of Trustees of Miami Township and record the same. 1273, Austin Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project, 0.25 acres. 1274, Austin Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project, 0.112 acres. And 1275, Austin Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project, 0.298 acres.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, I commend Charlie and his team for completing the Maple Crest project. And it's good to be able to accept that.
Yeah, I saw that. Thank you.
Great, great job, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Human Services, Tom Kelly.
Thank you. Under Human Services Planning and Development, we have one resolution. It is 1278. It will authorize the Extension of a Continuum of Care Planning Grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development through December 31st of 2022. Then under Job and Family Services, we have 1277, which will accept a grant from the Dave Thomas Foundation for Adoption in the Amount of $364,711 for Funding of a Wendy's Wonderful Kids Program through June 30th of 2023. 1278 will authorize a Memorandum of Understanding with the Montgomery County Family and Children First Council to Support the Needs of Children Enrolled in the Multi-Systems Youth Program through June 30th of 2023. 1279 will authorize a Memorandum of Understanding with Public Health Dayton and Montgomery County for Cribs Provided through the Safe Sleep Grant through September 30th, 2022, at no cost to the county. 1280 will amend the Agreement with the Bonadillo Group for Consulting Services for the Children's Services Division by adding Articles 7, 8, 9, and 10. And then we also need to authorize two agreements for Substitute Care Services through March 31st of 2024 for Children's Services. 1281 is with the Department of Mental Health, Fox Run Hospital, and 1282 is with KJ's Brighter Days LLC.
Move to approve. Second, but I just want to point out the, which number is it? 1279. I think we have to keep reminding people that, about safe sleep. You know, the ABCs, alone, on your back, and in a crib. And we have, because of this, because of public health, we have cribs that are available. And, you know, there's no reason that a family, or even the grandparents, shouldn't have a crib. That that is available, and we want to keep reminding people it's at no cost. And no cost to the county either. But of course, it's a cost, you know, sort of, I mean, public health, but that's so important. So yes, I second that.
And have the crib, but not only, and educate them to use the crib.
Use the crib.
Because periodically, where our investigators will go out and find out that there is a crib that's in the home but not being used for the sleeping of the infant.
That's a very good point, Tom. Sometimes it's easier when the baby's crying, just to take it out and fall asleep. And then that's when most of the accidents happen, so.
Yes, very, very important.
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved to the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Business Services?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Business Services and under Economic Development, we have Authorization and Delegation of Activity Agreements, Resolution 1283, City of Clayton for the Northview Park All-Inclusive Playground Project in an Amount Not to Exceed $80,000 through June 30th, 2023. Resolution 1284, City of Inglewood for Inglewood Hills Park ADA Improvements Project in an Amount Not to Exceed $40,000 through July 31st, 2023. And Resolution 1285, City of Miami'sburg for the Owner Occupied Homeowner Repair and Improvements Phase IV Project Program in an Amount Not to Exceed $50,000 for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Funds, through September 30th, 2023.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now we have comments. We have one citizen who would like to make comments. Ms. Perry? And as you know, come up and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Marion C. Perry. I live in Jefferson Township, the township that is forgotten, virtually. As I mentioned before, how many of everyone out here in the audience, in the audience, and the Commissioners, and the different services are vets? And I'll tell you why in just a minute. How many are vets?
Michael.
Okay. Why I was asking that question is when you get older, do you know you have someplace to go that other people in my community do not? What I mean by that is you can go to VA and get help. I live in Jefferson Township. I usually go to Miami Valley, but I hurt my foot, my toe. I don't have anyplace else to go. There's no urgent cures, nothing. I've called the different hospitals and asked, why not? They're building them everywhere, but look where I live. I need to know why my zip code changed, because if you call the phone number out there, it says the area, the county of the city, or there's a certain phrase they put. Why my polling place changed? It changed to the fairgrounds. Here's the problem. Just like it's hard to catch a bus certain places, there is no bus that goes out there. Now, I'm not, I forgot to mention, there are older people who can't get there. Their families won't take them. You'll find that out when you get older yourself, like me. I don't have anybody to help me get there. I live in a township, and I want to know why the Commissioners are helping cities like Trotwood, Miami'sburg, Inglewood, Vandelia, Clayton, but not Jefferson. As you can see, this is Jefferson, okay? I have called the TV channels when something positive has happened. They don't show up. Last, on the 13th, we had a giveaway for the children that live in Jefferson Township whose parents can't afford anything. None of the TV channels appeared. I have a problem with my water pressure, and I pay my water bill to the county. Can't get anybody to help me, not unless if I call out a plumber. And on a fixed income, that's not going to happen. And I mentioned before, we need a urgent care. Nobody. And I mentioned before, we need a urgent care. Nobody will respond. There are a lot of things that Jefferson needs, but we do not have the money. But everybody's paying their property taxes, so, like me, on a fixed income, but can't get any help. And I don't understand, excuse me, why the county commissioners do not help these residents, including me. That's my phrase. And like I said, this is where I live, being nipped and tucked by everybody. Miami'sburg, Moraine, and everybody else. But this is where I live, and we can't get any help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Comments by our County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. Montgomery County wrapped up yet another successful Youth Work Summer Experience this year for our young people. And this program is, I think, near and dear to all of our hearts. We have the best youth program in the state of Ohio. And we also bring in youth from surrounding communities. This year, we had almost 400 high school age participants that worked with 185 employers over a span of eight weeks, so pretty phenomenal program. Youth Work strives to educate and improve the lives of young people from the ages of 14 through graduation. And there's nothing like before young people graduate to give them an opportunity to have a work experience. But we also have a fall program that's coming right around the corner. For those that can juggle, school, and balance school, and also a part-time job, especially the seniors, this is a great opportunity to learn more at www.thejobcenter.org/youth/youthworks. Again, that's www.thejobcenter.org/youth/youthworks. We are also always looking for employers. So for the employers out there, if you're looking to be a mentor to a young person, give them an opportunity for job training, please contact us at the Job Center. This is an opportunity to be a trainer and also give the youth some pay and some compensation. And we pay that pay part and the compensation and also the workers' comp. So you can find out how to get involved at thejobcenter.org/youth. Again, that's thejobcenter.org/youth. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
And we've met different interns, even here in the county, working. And the other part of that is hopefully they might be future employees if they have a good experience. And, you know, we're always looking to kind of plant seeds. They can see the difference, they can make and get ideas of career choices that they have in front of them.
It's amazing, to your point, Commissioner, we see the ones that come back every year, so they're already trained and they just fall right in. So it's great. I know Emily had one as our clerk, our communications, and all through the county.
Yeah.
So like in the beginning of the summer, then all of a sudden you see all the young people come in. And it's just great, especially for the ones that you get to see come multiple years.
And the year-round program is really important, too, because not only do they get to work, but they also get additional training and our employees work with them. And so that when they come out of that program, they're either ready to work or go to college or military. And I mean, that's our goal, is that everybody that graduates from a high school in our county is doing one of those three.
Absolutely.
Why do you think it's valuable if you find a job that you don't like?
Well, yeah, that's true. You know what you don't want to do.
Well, I don't like that part of that job.
Right, yeah. That's true, yeah.
Rather than go and get an education and decide, oh, maybe that wasn't what I thought. All right. Well, on a similar note, Environmental Services recently said goodbye to four engineering interns. We heard all about their project from Central State University. And we have heard that they were a great asset to your department in identifying inflow and infiltration in Harrison Township. So these are college students, a different program, but same idea. And additionally, these interns worked with a new leak detection process called smoke testing. And so this is a lot of, you know, good experience with technical skills and experimentation and whatnot, which will provide us cost savings and infrastructure improvements for years to come. So it was a huge plus for us. So that's pretty cool. And those interns were paid through a grant that was funded by both Central State and our Montgomery County Workforce Development. And I'd also like to mention that this past Saturday was African-American Wellness Walk at the Old River Park in Dayton. And I couldn't be there this year. I got, there was, once again, there was an Inglewood parade. There's all these things happening at the same time, and I have not figured out how to be two places at once.
Tom, did you go there? Tom represented us there with the proclamation.
Good.
Yes, thank you, Tom.
Was it well-intended?
Yes, it was.
I saw a lot of pictures.
I saw pictures, yeah. It was good crowd.
Good. Thank you, Tom.
And that event certainly provides awareness, prevention, and promotes better behaviors to prove outcomes for Black families in our community. So it's all that wellness and prevention that Michelle was talking about that is so needed. So, bravo for the walk.
Commissioners, if I could just add, we're one of the partners for the Central State Land Grant Program. As you know, our state, working with Ohio State and working with the Farm Bureau, years ago, we fought really hard to get the land grant kind of shifted to Central State. And so Charlie and Keith and the team, working with the interns there and the program, it's a pretty phenomenal program. We work with the Department of Agriculture, and so it's a big deal, working with the interns at Central State.
It's a great model.
We're growing that.
Maybe one or two of them might come to work for us in the future.
We hope so. It's a great model. Thanks. Good partnership. So I know probably a lot of people, many people, maybe not everybody in the county, but many of us have driven that intersection of Alex Bell and Mad River. It's always been a big source of frustration, especially for the people that live down there. But that all changed last Friday when Paul and team opened the first roundabout. So we are now Roundabout City. I can't wait to see the big truck roundabout, but it was a 967,000 roundabout. It was completed in four months. That's incredible, especially given how things are taking so long these days. And it will boost traffic efficiency and safety, and that's another key there. That was such an unsafe intersection. I know many times, you know, you come close. So on average, roundabouts reduce crashes by 35% and injuries by 76% and fatalities by 90%. So along with improved traffic flow and safety, roundabouts are friendly to the environment because they decrease vehicle emissions and fuel consumption, because cars aren't stopping at lights or stop signs. So congratulations, Paul. And would you like to add anything about that successful venture you guys did?
How much time do I have?
As long as you want. As long as you want. If you give me your, oh, you drank your water. Never mind. I was just hoping he gives me his water.
Commissioners, I'm sure you've heard me say that there's a career project for me. I was a consulting engineer in 1981. We were hired by the county engineer to design a traffic signal there. And at the public meeting, 150 people opposed it, so the county engineer dropped the project. And the traffic volumes then were about the same as they are now, so it's been 40, 50 years this has been a problem intersection. So it's very satisfying to actually get something done there. We had a public meeting in 2018, and it was well-received by the public, so we proceeded. And we did open it Friday. We did a soft opening without any advanced fanfare, because we didn't want to try to open it under heavy traffic and be best for everybody. So we are having a ribbon cutting tomorrow, ceremonial, off of the pavement, out of the way. And it's a good idea. And so it'll be officially open. We do have some more work to be completed, landscaping and the permanent lighting, landscaping because of the planting season, lighting because of delivery of the lighting. So it's gonna be a great project. We, it's easy to drive. It's a one-lane roundabout. People just have to remember to always turn right when they're entering and leaving the roundabout. And when they're entering, to yield to people who are already in the roundabout. It's designed to cause you to slow down, and you do slow down. Traffic actually moving in the roundabout is probably only going like 15 miles an hour, so it's an easy merging movement. So far, it's worked very well. A lot of people are complimenting, surprised how easy it is to go through there. So we do have a video how to do it on our webpage, and it's really pretty simple. So our webpage is engineer.mcohaw.org.
Congratulations, Paul.
Yeah, that's great.
The work that you're doing is not going unnoticed. We had some people over at Mark Wodis Place on Turner, and they were complimenting, you know, Third Street Bridge, the worker chute mill. I know Philadelphia Bridge, you're working on that one, so. And now this roundabout, you're doing work all over the county, and it's, everyone's noticing it, so congratulations, you and your team.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, guess what? It's back to school time. Let's raise our hands. Whose kids are in school or getting ready to go to school or grandkids? And guess what? We've had a couple of wonderful backpack distribution events. Now, Friday, our Montgomery County Fatherhood Initiative and the Office of Reentry provided backpacks. Were you there? No, that's right. You weren't there.
No, I didn't spirit. I was in the spirit.
But you weren't in spirit.
I was watching from afar.
And guess what? They stuffed those bags with supplies for over 200 kids.
That's great.
It was.
That is.
Exactly. So Saturday, Carolyn and I got to go to the Haynes Children's Center. The Ohio State Coalition of Clubs stopped by there, and they brought, again, 200 backpacks. And these were stuffed with age-appropriate school supplies. We were there with those beautiful, beautiful motorcycles. It was, yeah, it was great. And we can't thank them enough. They've done this several times throughout the seasons, and they're just wonderful, wonderful group of gentlemen and women. So we couldn't thank them enough, and we appreciate them coming and their time and responsibility.
Yeah, when they start coming down the road, you can hear them coming up main, and it's such a cool sound. I mean, if you like Harley sounds. But when they all come in and they're rumbling, it's pretty cool to see these big old guys in their leathers, you know, caring so much about our kids.
Exactly.
And they do care, and you know that part of the message is someone may look a little rough from afar, but their hearts are very soft for these kids, and they stick by them.
Yeah, they do it at Christmas and Easter.
Yeah, with several things, Christmas, Easter.
Back to school. Yep, they're great.
Yeah, they are, yeah. And before we go, I just have to give a shout out. John Parks, you had a wonderful, wonderful intern here. Is he gone, back to school? Put your mic on.
Yes, yes.
See, he never wants to talk.
My intern, I must say, he was the best.
Yes.
And...
Wasn't he, though? We got to meet him and talk to him.
Yes, Rodney.
He also informed us, John, that we don't see you, so.
I don't know what you're referring to on that one. Rodney is a student at Inglewood High School, and he's been with us two years now, and so...
There is no Inglewood.
Yeah, it's Northmont, sorry.
You got to know him real well, didn't you?
That high school in Inglewood, named Northmont. This is getting bad, isn't it?
We're really tough today, John, sorry.
This is why we don't ask you to talk, John.
Exactly. John, geez, I gave you an opportunity here.
Thank you. You shouldn't have.
Well, it says Inglewood kids. They're great.
But he was great. Everybody was trying to steal him from me.
I'll bet.
And, you know, he's gonna be coming back every year, hopefully.
Good, good, good. What, is he a sophomore?
He's going into his junior year.
Junior, okay.
Yeah.
And looking at you made me think of last week, an event that we all went to. That was really great. We were a sponsor for the Hometown Heroes, the event that they do at the Fraise. And every year, they bring in, you know, country stars that maybe we've never heard of, but we might have heard one or two of their songs, which was the case last Thursday night. I know a lot of people knew the Rice name, Chase Rice. Yeah, but not related. But it's always fun, and it's so nice to see all those airmen and women there and just having a good time. And so I am very glad that we are able to sponsor that and be a part of it. And then I know some of you went, we met the new base commander, and I reminded him that some of the best parts at the base are in Montgomery County. Everybody forgets that. But, you know, the museum is in Montgomery County, and the Air Force Research Lab is in Montgomery County. So the most fun and the smartest in our county, so.
I have to remind Green County that all the time.
I know. It's an ongoing thing with the Commissioners.
It is, it is, but I try to remind them as much as I can.
Well, it's a great event for great people who are, you know, a small way to honor their service and sacrifice, so pretty exciting. With that, if no one has any other further comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, and we are meeting, let's see, next Tuesday, August 23rd at 1:30 p.m. Have a fantastic week.
Great.
Thank you.